Good evening. We have a forum at 6:30. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. And first up for your information, Mr. Dwyer.
We have Alexi Levine.
Hello, thank you.
You don't look like Lexi.
I'm Lexi.
Go ahead. What have you got?
Oh, so I'm one of the owners of the Massage School. We moved into that building last year at 231 Russell Street. And we want to put a sign up. It's a small, simple sign. I sent a PDF of it. I don't know if you have it. I have, I can provide it again.
So I don't have to go fumbling for it. I'll be happy to set you up for screen sharing. And you can show us your, your drawing.
Sounds good.
What is the address, Alexi?
231 Russell Street.
Thank you.
And it's approximately four by six feet. It replaces the old 50/50 Fitness sign. I have it up on my screen. Do I have to do something to share it or?
There should be a green.
Hit Share Screen at the bottom of the Zoom.
If you drag your mouse over the bottom of the screen, you should see it. And then after you hit Share Screen, it'll ask you which window to share.
There you go. So it's just our name in blue and yellow. And it's about approximately four by six. So it's about half of the allowable size. It's the same exact size and sign structure as 50/50 Fitness had with the same company, Sunray's Printing is making it to their same measurements. And it's not lit from within, although I'll put a little light on the outside of it.
The light on the outside is like a gooseneck overhead or?
Yeah, I actually purchased a solar light that's like a gooseneck overhead on both sides. We'll see how that works. There is, there is a hardwired light on the bottom, but I'd like not to use it if I can get away with the solar one being good enough. Let's see how that works out.
That's right. Can you shut solar ones off?
They, they have a light sensor, so they come on when it gets dark. And they usually run out of power a few hours before the morning.
So in other words, the sign will be on all night.
As long as the battery holds on. It's a much less dim, much less bright light than a hardwired light. Though it's 300 lumens, which is like a, I think that's like a 40, 40 watt light bulb. At most, maybe it's more like a 25 watt light bulb.
Any other questions, comments?
Do we have any residential butters?
Mark, you've got an awful echo for some reason.
I what?
You've got an awful echo. When you're speaking, it echoes.
Don't know what to do about that.
There are very limited residential properties in that area. There may be one or two. But not right. Not right there. Maybe there's an occupied house across the street, I think, but I might be down a little bit.
Yeah, there's. There's not much there.
It'll be less bright than the streetlights for sure. We are between basically Wildwood BBQ and that little ice cream shop. I think it's called Heaven or something. Across the street from the Hadley Family Practice Medical Building.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign as, as presented.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck.
Thanks, bye.
And Jim Carlin. Next.
Mr.
Jim Carlin?
Mr. Carlin? He's not responding. Mr. Carlin?
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so I'm, I'm back for 355 Russell Street, the AT&T Wireless Store.
358?
355.
Okay, I did send that around, but let me see if I can pull it up. Okay. Let's see. I'm going to have to manipulate this a little bit. It's sideways, so let me get it opened and yeah, okay.
The email comes at 351 Russell Street.
Okay, I think we're in business now. Get back to here. There we go.
So we made it a halo lit and we brought it down to 37.5 square feet underneath the 40 square foot allowed.
Remind me again, what's the dimension?
You said 37 point something, right?
Yes, 37.5 square feet. So it's 42 inches tall by 10 foot eight and 5/8 wide.
Okay.
Halo, man.
That's inconvenient. Any other questions or comments on the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is that the only sign? Is there a sign going at the pylon? So the ball?
I don't think they have a pylon here, no.
Second. Motion second. All, any other comments? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too.
Good luck.
Okay, next up would be Attorney Reedy.
Thanks, Mr. Dwyer. Hi, everybody. So I'm here twofold. One is 303 Russell Street, that rear building. Last meeting, you approved that A and R. And also to remove the requirement that it be a Rayos and we had talked a little bit about what the use was going to be. I had sent that email for the Subaru dealership. Motor Vehicle Service, General Parts Storage. They're also going to do car wash in detailing. And they're going to have motor oil storage above ground, no more than 500 gallon above grounds storage tanks, oil water separator, floor drain. But none, nothing on the parking area, the building footprint, that's all staying the same. If, if they want to change it, they'll have to come back before you, obviously. So we're requesting further site plan approval waiver, please.
That was a good point you brought up, Tom, is the fact that there was some controversy in the past regarding parking. They would a lot of cars close together and it was like a storage facility. So if they're going to do something like that, they'll have to come back.
And we've learned in previous projects that they are, actually are a very small quantity generator over the aquifer if they recycle their oil.
Right.
Nowadays, about all strikes they have is used oil.
I'll make a motion to waive further site plan approval for Steve Lewis Subaru for 303 Russell Rear.
Second. Motion and second. Any other discussion?
If I, if I could, maybe just make it for the Subaru dealership and
Subaru dealership, okay.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Not accepted, no. That'd be Subaru. All, all in favor of the motion? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing I had, I know Attorney Albano's here as well. I don't know if you want to talk about the renewals. I'm here on behalf of Hadleaf for their renewal. And I think Attorney Albano's here on behalf of the Heirloom Collective. You know, under your bylaw, you've got renewal requirements and I, in correspondence with Attorney Dwyer, he thought that we would at this meeting, talk about when we could and how and what we should do to submit for those renewals.
Do we need to go through a formal public hearing on this? I don't remember.
We did not have one on the first renewal for the heirloom.
Okay. And we approved it?
Yeah, I think, well, I think the bylaw says that you publish and if there are no objections, you'll approve it.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
I'm just looking for that, so.
I can tell you where it is, Bill. It's section 30.4.5.7.
Four point. Yep, okay. So hang on, let me bring that up too, so we can all see it. So that's what we have. So we're doing one for one year and one for two years.
No, the one year is the initial issuance of the license. And then there are two, two-year extensions or renewals.
Okay, so we're doing Hadleaf for a
The first one.
For the, for the one year and your, for the two year.
Yeah, Al, Hadleaf's only been open since October of 2022. So this will be their first renewal.
Okay.
So I guess what we do is publish a notice of the request for renewal and with the words in there that the renewal request will be granted automatically unless a written objection is received within 20 days of the first publication of notice. So what do you think, Jim? Just get a, get a legal notice out?
I will get a legal, I'll get a, I'll get a quote. I will send each of you gentlemen, the price, you can split the cost between the two of you. And that'll be it.
Great.
That sounds great.
Okay.
You'll arrange for the publication, correct?
I'll take care of the publication and newspaper, yes.
We're just going to get a bill. Okay, fine. Great.
And the way we do our, our, our fees now was the price of publication in a newspaper plus the price of postage add 10%. We were using 350 bucks. I went to get Gazette, went up on their legal notices. We weren't paying for beans on legal notices because they went so high. Legal notice has lately been running, and you've seen it, have been running about 450 bucks.
It is what it is.
Right.
So doesn't seem like we need to send written notices, just need to do the publication.
Just two notices in a newspaper. It doesn't say anything about notifying a butters. So.
Okay.
Probably try to make that for March 7th, good for everybody.
March 7th, you say?
March 7th?
Yeah. It's fine.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Mr. Dwyer?
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Jim Shay.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So I happened to sign on before Greg, but this is Greg's ask of you guys. So if I could pass my time to him?
Oh, sure.
Hey, guys.
You were a great tide anyway.
We wanted to talk about getting approval to do the softball field on that big empty lot that's
How about a little background? Who you are, who you represent?
Okay.
And what you want to do?
Okay, yeah. Greg La Sage on the Park and Rec Director for Town Hadley. There's a need obviously in our community for
Is there any chance of seeing you when you talk? I can understand better when I see somebody's lips moving.
All right, hey, guys.
Thank you.
We'd like to get a softball field in that area, but just south of the substation on River Drive. Obviously, there's a need for playing space for softball. Right now, our girls play with really the only use they have is the fields over at Hopkins and they kind of get pushed around a little bit. So, so there's, there's a need for a softball field. We did secure some money from the state to, for the project. We just want to, we need to find the best area to put the field on. I know there's, I've heard different interest in that land and I just didn't know how feasible it is for us to use that.
Have you consulted with Hopkins regarding Phase Two of their expansion for ball fields? Because they're going to put another softball field there. And also too, have you consulted with the Select Board about the future site for a DPW? So if all of a sudden you put a softball field there, where the DPW is in negotiation to have some expansion. So I think there should be a little bit more conversation before you usurp that land. And then it would be very difficult if the DPW had to use some of that land because they're very tight where they are.
So exactly is this land?
Pardon?
It's adjacent to the North Hadley Fire Substation. Which would have been just about the time you got on the board.
So it's just
Maybe just before.
So it's just south of the?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Into the rear.
Well, it would pretty much preclude, if it's just south of it, it would preclude any extension of using all that facility in the back. So there should be some conversation with A, Hopkins and B, the Select Board, who really is in charge of the facility. So if all of a sudden you put a softball field to the south of the substation, there's going to be no way you can probably access it adequately for DPW and but that's not certain that the DPW is going there, but there is a committee that is reviewing the option and that is one possible option from what I understand. So just because there's some open space, we're not against the idea of a softball field. But there is going to be a softball field, another one at the Hopkins Academy site. So you're going to have three softball fields there.
So remind me, I seem to recall that having softball fields at North Hadley was part of the original site plan submission. Anyone else remember it that way?
Yeah, I guess seemed to.
Greg, can I jump in here?
More, more possibility, not part of the site plan. I'm not sure if we ever voted on it as being a
No.
Possibility.
The original
I can answer some of these.
It could be a bundle of things. There was nothing decided that it was, was going to be a fire station and a softball field. That was one of the options that could be there. Another one was a DPW yard.
Yeah, hard.
There was, there was a lot of possibles besides the fire station and nothing was ever decided or voted upon. Being that I am on the DPW feasibility committee, that is one of the sites that we're looking at as possibly using for a DPW yard. So to say that we could, I would not be in favor of approving it for a softball field until the DPW, until a committee decides that we don't want that as a DPW yard. And that has not been decided yet.
Jim, can I cut in here for a second?
Sure.
Okay, so we went about a year and a half ago and had a meeting in front of the Select Board to ask them if this was a possibility and they voted on it and they gave us the land to build the softball field. I then went and secured funding from the state, from Representative Carey to build the field. And the only reason we were here was because Carolyn told us that we needed to check with you guys and explain what our plans were. And so the reason that we weren't doing it at Hopkins was because Hopkins obviously has the ability to use those right after school and in the evening. And so when these young girls, which it would be 12 and under, would be able to use these fields was when they're done. So that would be, who knows, anywhere from five to seven o'clock at night. And we're not going to have lights out there and these girls aren't going to have a place. So right now, they have to ask the Cal Ripken team for time. There's literally no place for these young girls and those fields, believe it or not, are actually, you know, too big. Because as you get bigger, the fields get bigger, or as you get older, the fields get bigger. And so this is going to be a dedicated 12U field for these young ladies to be able to play on. And I actually called a member of the Select Board because I had heard that that was a place they were looking for. And I said, well, what does that mean for us? She said, it doesn't mean anything because we already approved you guys.
Well, you're talking a year and a half ago. There's a new group of select people aboard. And what's happened to Hooker School? That was one of the provisions that was available. I was on the CPA committee when we were discussing the Hopkins Academy field. And there was always some controversy. Well, Hopkins is using it. It's a field that is, can be used by both the community and Hopkins Academy. Hopkins Academy does not control it completely. But there ought to be some way that you can work it out. And that was the ultimate reason for allowing the CPA funding for Phase One at Hopkins. And Phase Two is about ready to come up. And so if you want to put your, your bid in for a field there, that's possible. But the, the consensus at that time was the kids that are in school, they'll be playing, they're not going to be playing two sports. In other words, they're not going to be playing for a junior high team or a high school team and under the 12, 12 and under. And that's what was the Hooker School was going to be used for. I mean, you know, the elementary school.
Oh, it seems, you got to go back to, you got to go back to the Select Board and see if there are agreement, in agreement with the other decision, whether things have changed. I mean, people can change their minds. People can
Wait, so you're telling me that now that we've secured funding, that they can then go back and change their mind after they voted on it?
Okay, guys, timeout, timeout. We're not, we're not telling you
Back up, stop, slow down.
We are not telling you anything. It's not our decision to make.
Well, that's what Mike was just saying.
It seems like
There seems to be
Directive from the Select Board as to how to proceed here. If they want to pull this, if they want to pull this site off the table for the DPW, then fine, we can go ahead. If not, we got a problem.
But it's their problem, not ours.
Exactly.
Yeah, if you, I mean, we, we can't give you, all I can tell you is the DPW feasibility committee is looking at that site as a possible location.
Any probabilities?
The selectmen are the ultimate owners and deciders on the property as to whether it's a DPW or a softball field, other than town meeting. If, if, you know, I'm only telling you where the DP, where the feasibility committee stands. This is not a planning board decision to say you can or cannot do this.
No, I understand that. But what I'm saying is that decision has already been made. They already voted on it.
Okay. I'm not going to dispute that. I'm not going to, I'm not going to, not going to make a big deal, but we have seen nothing from the Board of Selectmen that says it is a softball field or a reserve for DPW yard. Carolyn knows the DPW committee is looking at that location. She also made a mention at her last meeting that the softball field, the Park and Rec's looking at that for a softball field. I don't, I have seen nothing in writing from the Board of Selectmen, so I can't comment on who. I don't, I have seen nothing in writing from the Board of Selectmen, so I can't comment on who has, if you would, first dibs on the field. If the Select Committee decide it goes to the softball field, so be it. Let's see something in writing and we can all move on. It's that simple.
Okay, so next, the last question that I have then is, what do you guys need from us?
If it's going to be a softball field. I don't I don't know that we need anything, Mr. Dwyer, do you?
Well, I think we'd like to see drainage plans or at least a statement from, was it Berkshire Design that did the site work there?
Oh, okay, so you do have an engineering team looking at it.
Yeah, so if we want to know whether whether, you know, whether there are what the drainage provisions are and um. Probably. They've already been factored in to the what we've seen and approved.
Yeah.
Should should we have something in writing from the Select Board saying that?
We'll we'll get that. We'll get that. We will get that.
It would be good to see their language, to see if they gave it to you in perpetuity or if they, you know.
To protect everybody, they should the Select Board should give it to us and get everybody that in writing.
Yeah, a- and I think they would have to because there's no way that the state's going to give us a hundred thousand dollars to build the field and then the next year have the town tear it up to put in a DPW.
And that would be a waste of everybody's money. I have.
Yeah. Hundred thousand dollars to build a field?
You have no idea. The parking lot alone.
How much do they promise?
Well, Joe, Joe, don't.
They gave you a hundred thousand.
Put some grass out. They got to put underground drains to make sure that they they they're looking what South Hadley. Put a softball, put their fields in just uh off of forty seven, just outside of the center. The Army Corps of Engineers did that. They spent, the Army Corps of Engineers spent about six months digging, putting the underground drainage in. To make that nice level flat and not hold water. So putting in fields nowadays is quite a project.
They're kind of close to wetlands too, down in the meadow there?
That that's all going to be decided by whatever. There is wetlands out back. Yes, there is.
So a- and Joe, just so you know, the parking lot alone is almost twenty seven thousand, just for a gravel parking lot.
So.
And I thought you had the funding in place already, so I was just wondering how much the funding was, so.
I do.
I'm not questioning the amount. That's just what.
The money's been earmarked for us for this fiscal year. So we were literally starting on, we were coming to you guys to see if there was anything that you needed from us so we could get started around April to start building it.
Yeah, I I like Mr. Dwyer said, probably drainage and parking. That's all you're going to have.
Perfect.
So if you work through Berkshire Design, they have the underlying plans and they know what they have done so far.
I know it's tough to see. Oh, you can't see it at all. Never mind.
We can't see it, right?
I don't have it on my my computer. I have it on my phone. Um, but they they have the initial plans.
Okay.
Um. That were designed when they built the uh the fire station. Berkshire did an initial design that included a softball field and also a soccer field.
Okay. So we just need to get that matured.
Absolutely. We'll get it on the agenda for the Select Board for, you know, the first available time and. Um, then we will get you the plans from Berkshire Design and uh.
They'll they will be meeting next. A week from tomorrow.
Right, okay.
If you can get on that agenda. I don't know if they have space, but.
Greg?
Yeah, I'll work on getting on.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you very much. We'll get you everything you need for the next time. We'll be. Okay, have everything for you.
Sounds good.
We won't need a formal site plan approval at it, will we? I don't think so.
I don't think so, if if especially to the extent that it was worked into the original plans.
Right, okay, just just we just want to make sure everything is in place. That's fine. Okay. Right. Alright, thanks, guys. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Good luck to the winner.
Oh, I had written down Matt McTeague, but I don't see. Him here. Um. And I wrote down Kip DeVito. And I do see. Kip DeVito still here.
He's a um Mr. Chair, he's a member of our Verizon Wireless.
Okay, fine. Jesse Marino?
Same.
Same, okay, and David?
David Vivian, Juan Latori are also.
Okay. Okay, that is the administrative uh. Section. Kishore is also interested in the project.
Yeah, I'm here for Verizon.
Okay. Uh, so we'll we'll open the public meeting on the public hearing and read the notice as it appeared in the Daily Hampshire Gazette. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a Zoom public hearing on Tuesday, February seventh, twenty twenty-three, beginning at six forty-five PM. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of Verizon for a site plan approval, special permit for wireless tower to install install a wireless communication. At. I forgot to put the address down. How about that? Oh, at three fifty Russell Street onto the existing building. Plans are available by emailing planning@hadleMA or visit Town Clerk's Office. Details for Zoom meeting are available by going to Town. Uh, Agenda, published twice in the Gazette, uh, January twenty and twenty-seven. And with that. It's on to you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my name is Attorney Michael Fenton. I'm a shareholder at the law offices of Shat Schwartz and Fenton. Our address is fourteen forty-one Main Street, Suite eleven hundred in Springfield. We're here tonight as counsel to Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. And we're joined by the full complement of our Verizon Wireless team and consultants. Uh, Kip DeVito and Jay Latori are both here as our radio frequency engineers. Uh, Jesse Marino and his counterpart on behalf of Proterra Design Group, our engineering firm. And David Vivian is our site acquisition and leasing specialist. The proposal before you is uh seeking a special permit to install antennas on the rooftop along with uh support equipment. At three fifty Russell Street, uh, the Homewood Suites. Uh, these antenna and support equipment were a part of the submittal meeting where I last appeared before you on January third. Uh, the antennas will all be enclosed behind RF friendly screening on the rooftop. And comply in all respects with the dimensional and use requirements of the Hadley Town uh bylaws and zoning bylaw. Uh, we are located within the narrow wireless uh telecommunications services district. And have submitted to you a full complement of supporting due diligence and materials as required under the bylaw. Uh, some pertaining to RF and describing the need for the site and then the balance uh describing the schematics and. Uh, photo simulations showing what the um de minimis impact will be as a result of this installation. So uh with that, Mr. Chair, I invite uh Proterra Design Group to uh show you the plans and the photo simulations that they've prepared. And if there's any questions about that or any questions after that presentation of the plans and photo simulations. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions, whether it be related to citing or RF or otherwise. So Jesse?
Sure, um, can I get to be able to share the screen?
You should be set for that.
Okay. Let's give it a shot here. Everybody see that? It should be the cover of the plant set?
Yes.
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 Okay, um. So we're here before you. Um, this is a Verizon Wireless uh communications facility. So it's a roof mounted. Uh concealed rooftop facility. Uh, it's known by Verizon as Hadley Five. Um, it's at the corner of Russell Street in uh North Maple Street. I think that's known as the uh Hadley Corners area. Um, kind of the same set of parcels as as Home Depot. Um, we're actually on this um C two parcel. It's where the Homewood Suites is. Um, so access is out for Russell Street. Um. Off of what's uh known as um the Hadley Corner Drive, uh that the. Hotel is located on this parcel here. That's a two point four acre parcel. Um. Sort of it's a basically appears like it's set up here as like a condo. Um, looking at the aerial, um, this is when it was under construction and it's a newly newly constructed uh hotel a few years back. Um, it's about a hundred unit facility. Um, and uh this is where Verizon would be locating um attempting to co-locate their equipment. Uh, this is the facility, Homewood Suites. Um, I think it's uh addressed now is is known as three forty Russell Street. Uh, just to clarify that, um. I know it says three fifty on most of our documentation and uh. It looks to me like um. The assessor's office had this as three fifty, so we have field cards that show it as three fifty. Um, but if you go to Homewood Suites here, I think their mailing address is three forty. Uh, so just to clarify that. Um. We are um on this parcel here. It's a big, this building's a C shaped building. Uh, we have both ground and roof equipment. Our ground equipment will be located in this nook on the backside of the building. Um, it's approximately a ten by fifteen foot area. Our rooftop equipment. Now zoom in here a little bit. This is the Hadley Corner aerial again. So again, our rooftop equipment is back here. This is the C shaped uh building that is the Homewood Suites. We have our ground equipment back here and then our roof mounted antenna equipment are is in two locations towards the backside of the building. This is sort of a zoomed in look of the building. Again, um, north is straight up the page here. Uh, in the rear of the facility is our ground equipment. Up on the roof, we have two uh concealed locations. Basically, we have a transparent screen wall. Um, that we're proposing to mount atop the uh. Stairwell. The stairwell penthouses on either end here. And this would conceal the antenna equipment that would be located inside. Um, they're approximately, uh, this one here is approximately nine by sixteen uh by about five feet high above the penthouse roof line. Uh, this one here is about six by sixteen. It's seven feet above the stairwell roof line, but um just under five feet under the main roof line. So this this illustrates it a little bit better. This is an elevation view. This is sort of the um west elevation as if you were looking. Um. You know, from the wetland area towards the building. So in the back, there's the the stairwell uh penthouse, you know, proposing to locate on top of that on one side. And then in the front of the building, um, there'd be another one here.
So so you're installing this on the roof. Of a building in which people are living, some for extended stays. Is there any health risk of having these whatever ways?
Mr. Sir, then Steve, Mr. Sir, then Steve, please let him finish. Okay, we'll ask questions at the end.
Okay, that's a good question. There are others on this call that can that can answer answer that. Uh, this is kind of a zoomed in area just to show you, kind of give you some scale of the equipment. So again. Um, this would be looking from sort of the parking lot kind of zoomed in. We have a a sort of a screen wall uh that would go around. Uh, where the antennas would be, so they'd be concealed behind this and we'd be looking to match the color. And the um architectural features of the building um enabled to hide it so we can able to hide it better. Um, as was stated, we did some simulations. Basically, um, we took some um Geo referenced photos from. Um, locations on the site and nearby. And we um developed a model that we superimposed on that. Um, so to give you an idea of what this would look like uh from ground level. So again, um, we did about uh five or six locations here and I'll just run run through some of those with you. This is the first location. This is in the uh Home Depot parking lot. Um, we're looking uh westerly and uh we're going to be in this area here. So this is what it would look like now. Um, after it be constructed, you can see that we have uh the screen wall located here over the stairwell. Again, that's now, uh, this is what we'd be proposing. Um, this is sort of a different view. This is up sort of more by Aldi's. Um, the one you previously looked at was right here. So we're going to show uh this is kind of what it looks like now. And this is what it looked like, the two areas. You can see the one on this side and the one towards the back. This is looking from the front. Um, the front side of the building. So this is um sort of right behind uh the uh the tire shop there. Um, in front of Chipotle. So here is what it looks like now. And again, back here, this would be the the screen wall structure. And I'll show you that again. Uh, this is from farther away, sort of out by North Maple or just just on to the parcel where uh the Home Depot is. So this is kind of a look of what we look across the parking lot. So there's what it looks like now. Here's what we're predicting with the screen walls. This is from the uh parcel that's um. Sort of to the west of this facility there. It's vacant right now. Um, we chose this one to get a kind of a better look at this rear area. Uh, but again, um, here is from that just off the street there. And the screen wall structure up here. You could see a little bit of the one in the front, but but not really. Just a very little bit pokes up. This is the rear of the facility where there's a nook. So we want to kind of use this nook here. Uh, we have a couple of uh refrigerator sized cabinets that we uh put in this area. Um, it's about a ten by fifteen foot area. Um, and we propose a canopy with a uh uh a screen fence enclosure. Uh, so this is what it looks like now. This is what it would be look like after our equipment's installed there. So the idea is that. Um, wouldn't really see it from from ground level here unless you really looked over the fence here. Um, that's the the basic presentation I have and if you feel free to answer any questions you guys may have.
Can we just go back to how far the? How uh? Uh, how far the? Radio uh the the how how big are they? How far do they extend?
Okay, sure. We can go back to that. So again, there's a. I know there's a lot going on here, so I'll try to. Again, here's our ground equipment at back up top. So there's a uh, so all of these is kind of over here. Home Depot is over to the right. So there's a stairwell tower here and there's one in the back here. So I guess this would probably be the best one. So if we kind of zoom in on those areas, um, this is the one um. Closest to Aldi's and uh this is the one to the sort of the uh northwest of the facility. But they're both stairwell penthouses, but the way that the roof line is in the building, uh, this this stairwell uh does not have roof access. The northern fifty antennas here, we're seven feet off of this, but the overall main building roof line are only about four feet above.
Okay.
What is the overall height?
Of the building?
Ground to the top of the tower, over this building, this drawing right here.
Yeah, so um, so the main roof is down here and then there's the roof line varies across here. So the the penthouse roof now is just under forty-four feet. And we'd be looking to be just under, you know, forty-nine feet at the top. So five feet above that. Area above that roof line. On that side. So just under forty-nine feet. On the other side, it's a little bit different. You can kind of see here. So this is to the rear where there's um, there's a stairwell here, but this has roof access, so it's a little taller. The one at the front is just a stairwell. So in that area, um, our antennas are actually facing this way, so we don't need it as high. Again, we're about seven feet above this line, but. Again, we're about seven feet above this line, but the overall main roofline of the building, we're about four feet. That answer, hopefully that answers your question.
That's, that, I was just looking at, at how it fit in with the bylaw with uh, the.
Yeah, so remember here.
Fourteen point six.
Yeah, this is the building here, so this roofline kind of jumps up and down and up and down. And if we zoom in here, this is one stair tower, it's got this one's a lower. So, you know, we're measuring from this main sort of line here up to that.
And we encourage, we encourage varied roof lines, just to break things up a little bit.
Yeah, I know, I was reading your bylaw there, and that's good, because it, I mean, it helps with the mass thing, and doesn't look like a long strip mall, right? It's got, it's got some, some um.
So who, who will own this, Verizon Wireless or, or the hotel?
Uh, so this is a, this is a, a Verizon Wireless who owned this, um, there'd be some kind of a leasing arrangement made with the hotel to locate.
Dan Jomack, the assessor, should send the bill to Verizon Wireless?
Yes, you mean for the, any tax that would be due on the equipment or? Or the, yeah.
Pretty, I think the pretty significant excise tax, uh, how much is the total cost of this installation?
Um, I don't know that I have that information, but um. I don't know if the, the attorneys do or not, but yeah, I know what you mean, there'll be some kind of a, a property tax on. On the value of, of, of the installation.
Sure, we will make sure that the assessors get a copy of the decision of the board, so that they can.
I mean, there are, there are other, obviously installations like this in town, there's one across the street that I think's T-Mobile. So there's, there's precedent, I'm sure there's a, there's a calculation that's done at the assessor's office and. Um, it, it would be however, however the town does it now.
Mister Chairman, this is uh, David Vivian, the side act uh, for Verizon. And um, uh, the actual cost will be bid out when we go to build and uh, submit the uh, building permit.
Ballpark, a million, ten million?
Oh, no, no, it would be something more on the order of uh, say, four to five hundred thousand.
Okay. Uh, and it concerns as to the health of people living in the building. We've got some, these are, this is a long-term stay if you want, you know?
I, I thank you for the question, we um, we have one of our. Radio frequency experts that can speak more eloquently to that, but just broadly, Verizon is on many residential structures and hospitals. In the Pioneer Valley and Hampshire and Hampton County area, and uh, as a federal license holder. Uh, comply at all times with FCC regulations regarding emissions, but if there's anything further you'd like to add, Kip, that's your area.
Hi, good evening. Excuse me, do they have facilities on the top of hotels where people live?
Yes.
Yes.
We have, we have went down the street at uh, you know, Connaught Lodge.
Okay.
Um, good evening, my name is Kip DeVito, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, yeah, um, so to speak to that question, uh, we did submit a third-party study for the RF emissions. Um, the safety aspect of this, and it was determined that we are well below the FCC allowed emissions limits. Um, and we, we did submit um, documentation, photos that do depict that. And we also will be putting up uh, signs that will. Um, be a part of our installation that will help anybody working on the roof. Um, understand that our antennas are there and what to do while working around them. So that it will be safe, we are licensed um, by the FCC. In order to be licensed, we must be, we must show that we are in compliance. Um, and like Michael said, we do have installations on rooftops and hospitals, um, all over the country.
Okay, thanks.
I've got a question that, this is actually from the, the uh, police and fire chief, in that. There is a number of uh, cell towers. In this section of town, there's across the street, there's one that's stopping shop, you're putting one in. And he's made the comment that it seems like in this particular area of Route Nine. Radio transmissions from the police and fire are deteriorating. And he's not blaming the cell towers, except this is the only area of town where there seems to be a concentration of cellular towers, cell towers. And, um. It's, it's, it's going. Radio transmission by the public, public communications is not what it used to be. Is, could there be any correlation between those two?
I, I, I don't know if I have the answer for that, I don't know, I can't speak to what they're using for equipment and frequencies. Um, maybe uh, Jay, would you be able to step in here?
Sure, uh, good evening, uh, this is Jay Littori, radio frequency engineer at Verizon, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, um, I'm, I'm here, uh, home address is one two two Forest Hills Road, Springfield, Massachusetts. Uh, I, I can't say that I've spoken to the, the Hadley Police Chief before, I, I may have. In, in different times, because as some of you gentlemen may know, um, many years ago, we were before you to um. Uh, propose a tower at the Hadley Public Safety Complex, um. Uh, I know I've been in touch with the Ambers Fire Chief uh, in the last year or two, and, and that has come up. Um, before that specific comment around Route Nine, so there, there's two things I'll say, first. Uh, I'm not aware of any uh, possibility that Verizon's radio frequency transmissions. Um, you know, maybe interfering with uh, any town of Hadley, you know, either municipal or public safety. Radio frequency transmissions, as an FCC license holder. We have very specific chunks of spectrum that we own and deploy, they are, they are different from public safety. And uh, just like we have uh, RF emissions requirements, we have the mandate, we have those same requirements for. Um, interference with other operators and different frequencies, so if there ever was a problem. Um, you know, Verizon would kind of have an obligation to work with any public safety entity to, you know, basically figure out. What the, what the potential interference is. More often than not, it, it's not us, um, because our, our radios are really designed to only transmit in certain waves. The, the most common thing that, that causes interference we see is. Uh, old repeater systems in individuals' homes or. Um, old, say like AM ta- uh, radio antennas that, you know, that have been up on a tower for twenty years, those can. Cause some issues, the one thing I, I will say is certainly, and I'm, I'm going to kind of speak to this as someone that. You know, went to my uh, UMass Amherst twenty years ago. Um, certainly I've seen in, in my lifetime, the, the growth of, you know, commercial activity. On Route Nine, and um, part of the reason and, and for this facility. You know, has acknowledged the fact that um, there is a growth in, in, you know, demand for businesses in this area. And what that's done is place the strain on the surrounding facilities. Um, that are trying to, you know, cover all of that traffic. You know, I have experiences as a, as a young person driving home on Route Nine and. Five o'clock uh, on a Friday, leaving school and coming back to Springfield and. Being backed up, you know, for five or six miles before getting on the highway to ninety-one, and so, you know, um. This facility, I think, is going to really improve that experience, and it's important, because while I don't. Know specifically, you know, if the town of Hadley Public Safety um, is using, you know, Verizon phones. Either for their, you know, day-to-day communications outside walkie-talkies, or say like um. They're um, you know, they have uh, computers in the police cars that they use to, to look up, you know, records and things like that. But um, if they are, and they're working in this area, you know, certainly they're going to see an improvement with this facility. Um, because, you know, the network continues to, to grow and demand, and uh, this is an important investment to meet that demand.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Everybody good? You're muted, Bill. You're still muted.
Mister Dwyer, you are muted.
You're still muted, Bill, here we go.
Okay, press the spacebar, should have unmuted. Uh. Do you have uh, any rendering of coverage areas of other cell towers? In the vicinity, is that part of the package?
Yes, uh, Kip, maybe you can walk through the engineering necessity case and show the coverage maps?
Of course. Did I ever let you share my screen?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is the uh, the RF. Uh, engineering necessity case that was submitted, um, I'll skip ahead to the um, coverage maps. Alright, so the first one here, um, this is for our seven hundred, like. My colleague Jay was saying, we have um, multiple frequencies. This is our first one, it's our, our base layer, coverage layer, it's seven hundred megahertz. Um, in the area, we have maybe two macros, um, covering the stretch of road, this area. Um, and, and this site that we're proposing falls about in between them, um. And, and it's going to fill in the gap of coverage here along Route Nine. Um, area and, and mostly for, for all these businesses in the area here. Um, the colors here are represented by this label up here, um, green is what we would consider. A signal level that's strong enough to be considered reliable in building coverage. The yellow is strong enough to be considered in uh, reliable in vehicle service. And the gray is reliable outdoor service here, so this site here is proposed to fill in the gap between these two sites. Providing a more reliable coverage to the area here. Um, this is a, a coverage plot of just the site itself, um, same color patterns, but it's just a coverage, seven hundred megahertz coverage. Of just the proposed site. Moving on here, we show another um, frequency that we deploy, uh, this is the twenty-one hundred megahertz. It's higher in frequency, and um, the characters to that, just um. It, it's going to attenuate more so than seven hundred or eight fifty, which is because it's a higher frequency. So you can see that the footprints are, are smaller than they were that, the seven hundred would provide. Um, but when we're able to deploy more frequencies, then we're able to offload. The capacity, the demand, the, the usage from all the new devices coming onto our network. And again, this is the twenty-one hundred megahertz footprint of just the proposed site. This is our eight fifty or, yeah, eight hundred and fifty megahertz, um, one of the frequencies that we deploy 5G on. Um, as you can see here, there's only one existing site in the area, um. There will become two with the proposed site. And you can see that these footprints for this frequency is somewhere in between seven hundred and eight fifty. That's, that's what we have for coverage spots.
So, are you running all three of those in the new location? The, the seven hundred, the twenty-one hundred?
Yep, there's.
And the eight fifty is only at the Hadley Emergency Center, right?
Correct, uh, at this time, yes, but um, we, we, we do deploy multiple frequencies at our sites. Um, we have licenses that cover ranges of frequencies, and we'll deploy them all. Um, at every site that we can, when we get um, either to modifying them or building them, um.
Okay. Thank you. That would explain, I work at UMass and uh, when there's a hockey game. You can't get coverage, because everybody's in there with their phones going.
Yeah.
Talk about bandwidth.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none?
Here, do we hear anything, anyone in the public? No? Have we heard anything, obviously not tonight, but have we heard anything over the past two weeks from anyone in the public? No?
No.
Okay.
No, I have received nothing at the planning email.
No.
Okay. Flying under the radar. Or being embraced.
Everybody wants their cell phones, and they're. If it was just a simple phone, it would be easy, but that's not what anybody uses anymore.
I would just note that I think that they have um, shown concern and care for aesthetics by placing it at the. Northwest and northeast corners of the building and doing it very pleasingly, so I appreciate that.
I agree.
Thank you.
I would be willing to bet Mister Palmer had uh, two cents to say on that one.
If a balloon flies over and admits an electro-transmitting wavelength. Could it stop the cellphone transmission? That's kind of a, a joke.
Is it a weather balloon?
From what country, a Canadian?
No, I think it's a little bit more east of Canada. Or west, whatever way you want to go.
We digress.
Well, I'm ready to make a motion, if there's nothing else to talk about.
Now, I'll welcome motion, Mister Dwyer.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the application, uh, based on the following findings. And upon the following conditions, project satisfies the general purposes of site plan approval bylaw. Project is in harmony with general purpose and intent of the wireless communication special permit bylaw. Project is not detrimental to the establishment or future character of the neighborhood. Intended uses are not prohibited by the terms of the bylaw and are permitted thereby. The application will be, is based on the package you have submitted, um. I'll double check the dates. Uh, you haven't updated anything since you filed, have you?
We have not.
Okay, uh, you're not asking for any waivers? Uh, copies of, uh, the application has been uh, distributed, is provided in the bylaw. Uh. Proposal satisfies the site plan review criteria and the commercial development performance standards. Um. So the design features are uh, considered an integral part of the terms of the approval. Uh, approvals for the following uses only, wireless communication facility. Um. I think in this case, we can dispense with the removal bond, because. I am sure that uh, the landlord has taken care of that. Um, if they walk away from it, that's between landlord and tenant, so. Uh, approval of other boards if and as required, including the conservation commission. Um. And now, this, uh, actually, not using any water, not using any sewer. It's really not affected by conservation commission, this is some existing structure, so we'll just say state agencies with jurisdiction. Uh. And uh, that is it.
That is the motion.
I would second.
Mark Dunn has seconded, any, any other discussion? Here seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, good luck, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we'll get this written up over the next couple of weeks and get it out to you and to the uh, the butters.
The uh, there are envelopes and mailing labels in our mailbox for the last three public hearings, Bill, including if you haven't already got them. For the uh, coffee shop, um, Emily, I, Ilki, Ikey. And I believe this one should be in the mailbox.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would note that um. They answered our questions mostly without answering the questions. They would usually start with, I can't speak to that, and then they would go on about what they could speak to. Their personal experience, so, but still, I. But still, I, I didn't bring that up then because I didn't feel.
Well, a, a, as far as RF being a safety deal, all it can do is quote what they have for USDA and, and whatever other government agencies and stuff like that, there is, you know, we're not, we're not looking for hearsay here, only facts.
Right.
So unfortunately, that's what we have to deal with. Uh, Mr. Comia, welcome.
Ken, don't take this personally, but I have to step away for a few minutes, uh, Jim, I made you co-host.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave the recording running and I will turn it off after the meeting's over.
Okay.
Thanks, Bill, hi, board.
Hello.
Hello, um.
I hope he gave you uh, the ability to share, or if he didn't, Jim, thank you.
Yes, I have the ability to share.
Okay.
Um, so I think where we left off, there, there was a couple of things in, in the, you know, a portfolio of work, um, with regards to um, looking at um, the private event venue, um, as well as the ag-related uses by law, um, draft. Um, I didn't, you know, so I think there's conversation to be had regarding that. I haven't made any changes, my understanding was that maybe the board wanted to take one more look at that. Um, in addition to um, um, where we left off with the affordable housing payments in lieu of, as well as uh, where the permitting guide. Um, so there's just a bunch of projects that are kind of floating out there. Um, and we'll figure out, you know, what those priorities are, especially as you approach town meeting. Um, but I don't know, Jim, if you want to address certain things and maybe, um, you know, go from that point, or?
I, I have made a few cha, a few edits, suggested edits to the uh, event by law, and what was the other one you called it?
The agriculturally related uses.
Private, private event and ag-related zoning. I don't want to go over that, we can, we want to go over it later in the meeting, but we want to talk about it anyways, so probably as good a time as any.
Okay.
Um, let's see. Let me try to get this on here, alright, how about uh? Can everybody see that one?
Still seeing your file folder.
What's that?
If you open the file, we're not seeing the file, we're just seeing your.
Are you seeing the warrant article number one right now?
Nope.
No?
No, maybe just re-click it one more time, Jim.
Okay.
Yeah, you want to open the document before you share.
Unless Jim is sharing his full screen, which is possible, maybe.
Right, I mean, there is a preview on the far right of here, but we're not seeing it opened. What we're seeing is your file manager app.
You are sharing, it tells me you are screen sharing.
Yeah, but what we're seeing is your file folders.
File folder, okay.
So I think if you end share and then, and then start again, if you have the file open.
Stop share.
Now, if you go to share, it should give you options to choose from.
Okay. Alrighty.
We're back in your.
Did that come up? Are you still seeing the file?
We're still seeing the file folders.
Yeah, we're still older.
What am I doing wrong?
Have you opened the Word document before you share?
Um, now, I mean, am I slow still?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Alright, here we go. They were opening the document, screen share.
And it should give you a choice of which window you want to share, and then you have to click share again at the bottom. Yes.
That's it. Alright, finally. Okay, so this is the agricultural things, if you would. And I haven't really made anything except that the very end, right near the end here, I, in, in red, I've added, it's before it was, I added the, the stuff in red.
Club events and.
Okay.
Any restaurant.
Um, probably not a big deal. And then at the very end, it says any building under uh, eight point three two, that was going to be completely eliminated, but I says that's what, I was afraid that that might completely take agricultural uses as putting them into too much of a uh, subjective decision as what is or is not exempt. This way it's clearly spelled out, if it's used exclusively for growing of agriculture, horticulture, yada, yada, or maintaining its own onsite equipment, no special, no site planner, they're, they're just like they are today. You could go ahead and do it without anything except the building that required building electrical permits, et cetera.
I think that, that, that's great, I think, um, you know, I know some communities have considered um, certain sizes, um, but if the board or the town, you know, I don't know how big the buildings in your agriculturally zoned, and if you even care about um, the size of the buildings that are you may be seeing, um, that wouldn't necessarily, based on this, um, be reviewed by the planning board, but rather by the building department. That's probably just something to consider, I don't know if there is any.
I mean, so, some of the ag buildings in town are fairly sizable, there's no question about it. Um, but usually those that are, are set way off from the properties.
Yeah.
And they're not really causing a drainage problem because they, the, typically the farmer owns a lot of the surrounding property around it, so any runoff is normally staying on their property.
Jim, a bit of, a bit of correction, uh, there's two greenhouse uh, farms that they probably ten or twelve greenhouses. They have a tendency to build the greenhouses up, thereby diverting water onto the neighbor's property. I had one experience on my farm, and they built it up about three feet and, so, but they don't have to go through any permits.
Okay.
Uh, how do we handle that? And, and right now, there's a, a, a bit of a drainage problem off Meadow Street, North Amherst Hadley area with that ditches there, and uh, some of the drainage has been blamed onto those greenhouses that were put up.
That, that guy's got a lot, that farmer has a lot of greenhouses, they already putting out more.
Yeah, and where does the water go?
And, and no, that's a good point, I, I, I'm open to suggestions.
I, uh, yeah, I, I don't.
We don't need to make that decision here, but how do you word eight point three point two to address that? Let's, let's think about that and get back to us.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and the other thing is, uh, uh, I think in Berry Mass, some farmer says, well, how are you gonna handle uh, the mud bog? Evidently, they've got, they wet the field down and they have these mud bog pickups come in and they race around and they, they make a lot of noise and they're very popular, however. So do we handle those?
That, that, that's, that's not under this by law.
Okay.
That would be under the next by law we're gonna look at. Especially that by law.
Jim, if you scroll down again where you said warrant to article two, do you mean in the black, do you mean that to say removing the section or replacing it as written below?
Yeah, good point, Mark.
See it again now?
You say amend Hadley zoning by law by removing section eight point three two, but then you rewrite it in red.
That's crossed out, that, that, that's Xed out, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna use that.
But it looks like you rewrote it in red, no?
That was my previous um, amendment, so that just needs to be changed, that language.
Eight point three point two in red is what it will be, is what the existing eight point three point two in blue will be replaced with.
Okay, so that's why I just thought you might want to say remove the current and add the new, or just replace, you know?
I think you're right.
Because when you say, you know, if you vote on removing it, it sounds like you can't amend it, you've taken it out.
Yeah, that, that's.
Just semantics that maybe the town attorney.
The part, the, 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 the two crossed out sections will be, will not appear anywhere, that's gone.
Right.
The, the, the place of red is what we're gonna see.
Right.
So we're gonna think, how can we word the eight, the revised eight point three point two to include something about addressing Joe's the concern about building up if it's what he just said? So.
So I think, I think one of the things that, so the, based on this um, site plan approval would not be required for um, any sort of building that has those particular uses, so would the greenhouse be? The greenhouse then presumably would not be handled or be reviewed by the planning board, um.
That's correct.
Wow, okay.
So how should, how should we handle the drainage, or should we not handle it? I mean, if you put five acres of greenhouses on a piece of property, certainly there's no penetration of the water on site, it goes somewhere.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, you, you can't give a cart blanche either, because then it could make a mess of real, in your, in what you're talking about, Joe.
You could have an exception that uh.
One example, that with Montgomery, uh, Roses move from the, the uh, you know, Home Depot site, they, they built the greenhouses that they put up there by three feet in the water drained on my particular property, it, 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 it's a rut in in the adjacent land, uh, three feet deep and four or five feet wide, I mean, it was substantial. It's not just a little water floating.
Mr. Tom, you're gonna comment?
Yeah, a few, a few things, um, I don't have the, the mess amendment for, at home here, I'm at home, but um, like as far as permitting for a greenhouse, there may be an exception, but I believe most of them, unless it gets to a certain size, that are exempt from a permit. But I did find, I did research and they do need to meet all setbacks. But in the, you know, internet, in the IBC, they do not require permit unless something triggers, which I'll have to look tomorrow at the office. Um, a challenge that I've been having, um, and the tenth edition's gonna help it, is we, in addition, go on one of the farm buildings, and I went out there and there was thirty, thirty employees. You know, I, I pull out and there's fifty cars and um, you know, they're working in unsafe conditions, so Mike and I met with state inspectors and fire, state, you know, fire marshals and it'd be in the building code, I could have enforced it, um, it needed to be sprinkled, I mean, this building was twelve thousand square feet. And that's where the tenth edition of the code is gonna help us, is um, because it's, it's a challenge, it would have been politically a mess for, for Mike and I to, to request that. But moving forward, the tenth edition is gonna straighten that out, that it's a, it's gonna be cut and dry, that these buildings unfortunately are more of a manufacturing, this probably is going across state, country, and you know, with all those employees in there, they have to, you know, start meeting the regular codes. But the, uh, like I said, the greenhouses just have to meet setbacks, as far as I can know.
Okay, so greenhouses are gonna green, greenhouses by themselves are a regulatory problem because they're, they're exempt from a lot of stuff. That's what you're saying, okay. So we need to address the earth issues of a greenhouse more than the greenhouse themselves. But I'm, in other words, if they're gonna be building up to put a greenhouse to get it out of a water area, we need, we, we need to know that, you need to know that, so they don't create a drainage issue for others.
That would be helpful for later on, yes. Like Mr. Zagronic said, that's where you run into the problem, if, if we just let it all exempt on something like that.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna make a comment to think about here.
Are you thinking, Jim, or are you muted?
No, I'm not muted. I shouldn't be, am I muted?
No.
Well, there was silence there, so I was wondering what's up. I, I mean, if there's any, any way of addressing something like that, is you could say any, the square footage of the, of, you know, one greenhouse is not gonna make a significant difference, but seven or eight will, ten or twelve will obviously make more.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I just put that last comment in to think about how can, what, what, what wording, what verbiage can be put in there to try to address this a little bit? So that we can, so that I and we can think about it, okay, that's all that's for, and that, that's not, that's just that, that however is not part of the by law by any stretch.
Yeah, because certainly they, the uh, you know, people traditionally bring in fill, uh, and uh, they build them up. So it, it does interfere with drainage.
Yeah, okay.
Has the board ever used the um, soil removal by law?
No.
No, that, that was very, very controversial and uh, I don't believe so.
No.
That had to do, well, there was a lot of gravel pits opening up in town when uh, one sixteen was being constructed, as well as ninety one. And it was kind of like a Wild West with trucks going all over town and obviously heavy trucks roading the roads, so.
Okay, well, let's look at. Alright. Alright, let's try it again here. Everybody see this one?
Yes.
Private event venue?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, that time it worked, cool, good. Same thing here, I put stuff in red. Um, the way this was worded, it seemed like if somebody wanted to have a wedding party, a party, a, a wedding party on their site for their, say this to their child, it would not, they would need a special event venue from the planning board. So I want to make it known that if somebody has a one-time event, and I defined it as one per twelve-month period, such as a family, relative wedding, graduation, et cetera, it shall be exempt from the by law.
Good point.
Okay. Okay.
So Jim, I think one of the things that initially this bylaw suggests is the private event venue utilizes the word private event, which there has to be a permitting process by which the planning board would identify this private event venue. So I think that's it it's it's clear based on the exemptions, and I think the exemptions do make it more clarified. However, someone will be coming, assuming that the town passes this, or if the town passes this, someone will be coming to the planning board with an application that says, we wanna be a private event venue. Um, we're in the AR zoning district and we're gonna go through this permitting process. But the I guess, you know, the the exemption that that's great language to to clarify that, but I think this is very specific in that someone will be coming to the board or to the town with a permit to create or be a private event venue um within that zone. So not homes typically unless they wanted to have some commercial um component um would be doing that, I think.
Right. That was that was what I thought too. Private event venue means they're gonna have in a private home, they're gonna have private events more than once a year. And yes, we wanna, we want to permit that, but if somebody wants to simply open their home up for their child's wedding, it would give the impression they would have to come to this special, I mean, we could exempt them, but nothing in the bylaw gave us authority to waive the buy waive this uh section of the bylaw. So I figured, well, it's either give authority or put the exemption in. I think the exemption is a little bit more clear.
We don't want people to have to come before us if they're having a home wedding.
That's exactly correct.
So we don't have to take a vote on it. They're they're automatically exempt by right.
That's what that's what this says. That's correct.
Okay.
Unless they unless they start using their site as a venue for others and they're doing it repeatedly. So yeah, if it's a one-off, it's okay.
Yeah.
How do we handle the? How do we handle the uh town commons? Does Blackman right now have control over it?
Board of Selectmen.
So the Asparagus Festival, and if they wanted to make a uh uh a beer tasting festival, uh any kind of festival, it can be done?
That most of the the a quarter of the town common, no. Over half the town common is in the business district. So um, you know, it's not agriculture residential. Except with the rear half of the of the of the South Common.
Certainly the cars are parked everywhere. It's it's not just the uh the idea of a business is.
And and the the that's that's correct, Joe, and the fighting, the Board of Selectmen and the Fire Department and the Police Department are all realizing they need to do a better job of policing that. And they may very well say that for using the part of the town common, part of the approval, the permit process may be to go to the planning board and apply this section. That'll be up to the Board of Selectmen. Okay, minimum sized parcel. I went from ten acres to five acres. Ten acres just sounded like boy, that's an awfully big event venue.
Five acres corresponds to the state statute.
Of what?
Of uh five acres uh for sixty-one A and stuff like that, you leave.
For farming.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I did put under the private event venue that says that you should have adequate water and permanent onsite wastewater. The uh, the original one allowed porta potties. And I'm thinking, you know, do we really wanna, do we really want porta potties?
But if you make somebody put us a sewer line in, if it's on sewer, it's gonna cost mega bucks.
Well, if they're gonna have, if they're gonna have a private venue over and over, do we want them to have real restrooms?
I hear you, yeah.
I mean, we're not trying to encourage private venues by any stretch. We wanna regulate those that have it. So my thing is, I mean, porta potties to me are disgusting little thing that you have in a in a work site.
Part of Patriots game.
So Jim, if if someone asked uh, what what are we trying to prevent? Like what? I mean, these venues, has something been cropping up that are persistently annoying us, the other people in town? I know one is the uh, the ban, the uh, you know, the parking, et cetera, for uh the ice cream place on Mill Valley Road.
But it doesn't seem to be annoying anybody but us.
No.
Yeah, I'm almost, I'm almost with you, Mike, so.
The 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 police and fire have had have had have had had issues with that.
Well, they can just start ticketing cars. I I
Well, when you say.
What, you you can start ticketing car, but if you're trying to get through there with a fire truck or an emergency vehicle and the cars are on the road, you're gonna go out there with a ticket, Joe, and start putting tickets on there? The police and fire still can't get through. We're trying to prevent a problem, not address it after the fact. I mean, if the if the board feels this, this bylaw is no good, we can scrap it. But the police and fire are looking for these things.
Would that go on this town meeting?
Yes.
Well, that's.
That's the goal.
That's a bit, it's a bit quick.
Are we putting uh special event and private event into the definitions?
Into what?
Are we defining what a special event or a private event is?
Yes, right up here.
But are we defining it as he said in definitions? Beginning of the bylaw.
Oh, oh, okay, so we would have to take, we could take these. We could put these into the definition section. You're right.
Yeah, that's the intention. It said amend section one point two. That's where you have your definition.
Okay, okay. So, but that doesn't, does that defines a special event as well? That just seems to define private event and a private event venue.
Oh, we just have to change the name of that bylaw, sorry. Private event venue. Um, so add five point ten, Jim, where that
Oh.
Black instead of special, it's private. So this, not to throw you for a loop, but uh we we just finished talking about this. I I worked with the town of Amherst on um this very particular bylaw. They're arriving at it though um and have addressed also their public spaces. So as Joe had mentioned about the town common, um, there is a mechanism by which someone could, whether it's the town, whether it's a private entity, if you know you have events like the Asparagus Festival or something else, presumably there would be some sort of permitting that would happen. Um, in just in summary of the particular bylaw um that we worked on and hammers that they're trying to move forward with is that the um there is um some some authority by the building commissioner to just approve um events that are one offs or one-time things. Obviously, there's other components to that like public safety and Board of Health. Um, but the planning board would be involved um where there's multiple events, so.
Does does Amherst allow, does that, excuse me, can does Amherst allow entities from outside of town to come in and use public facilities, i.e. the common?
So in Amherst, I think they alluded to um some sort of um race that they do in the town area, um the town downtown. Um, and a festival that is run by a bank um that they allow to use the town common. Um.
It's it's, the the bank's in town though, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
The carnival too, around graduation time.
Yeah, but that's that's the Rotary Club or Lions Club or something, okay? That's who sponsors that.
But how do you handle the, how's Amherst gonna handle the learning blowouts uh where these uh apartment complexes have.
Oh, that's what, that's uh.
Thousands of people coming in.
That's not regulated. Well, I don't know how it's.
But that's not town, that's not town property. My question was, do they allow, would they allow someone from Boston to come in, or for that matter Hadley, and use the Amherst Town Common for an event?
Yes.
Yeah, they do. They have the uh, the parking is for uh a farmer's market.
Farmer's market, they have, they've had the the town fair there.
Yeah, but but the farmer's market, the town fair is sponsored by the Rotary Club in North in Amherst. The farmer's market is sponsored by by an Amherst entity, which name escapes me.
Yeah, the Rotary, the Rotary Club is not a now, is 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 a private entity.
But it's located in Amherst.
Oh, I see. You're talking out of out of the area.
Meets in Hadley.
Oh, I don't know.
My point is, there was a question concerning the Asparagus Festival in Hadley because it was not sponsored by a Hadley institution. It was sponsored by WFCR out of Northampton or something. Uh, Tom Quinlan brought this up at the last meeting.
Okay.
His hand is raised.
We were just wondering if if yeah, if the select board would want a little.
The select board has issues, has control over the town common, not the planning board. And that's why I'm cutting off, Mike, but it's 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 not exactly apples and apples to the bylaw here.
That's why I was wondering would the select board wanna maybe have ask them if they'd want you to have a little control over it, you know, as far as direction with the people before they had to go in front of them?
That's a good question. That's 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 possible.
Does this definition, I don't remember, does it cover multiple days?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's that's the, that's the end of the definition. You got the exemption for a one-time event, and then you got the private events that could cover multiple that are intended to be more than once.
Well, I mean, I was saying like if it went Friday, Saturday, Sunday, is that one event or is that three events?
How would that matter? Relative to the bylaw.
If we had uh a new Woodstock in uh in Hadley.
Well, but what I'm saying is, how would that have any effect on the bylaw? If they met the bylaw for one day?
Yeah.
They're gonna meet it for all the days, even if it's if it's a month-long event, they're gonna meet it.
Right.
Um, there would be more of a, that would be more of an issue, I would think, for the Board of Selectmen. And not for the Board of Selectmen, for the Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Police, Police and Fire.
Right, if you had people sitting up tents and camping overnight or something.
Yeah, well, that's a good one. Someplace in here.
There's no transient, I think. I feel like it was there.
Proposed hours.
Events per year, attendees per event. Someplace in here we should put wording about no, no transient or no.
Number four, Jim, is the.
Over that accommodation. Okay, right, good, we have it.
Good.
Okay.
We won't be having a, we won't be having a Asparagus stock.
Okay, there was somebody, a lawyer, I won't start naming names, lawyer in Amherst had a uh, one of his kids got married and uh he has a considerable amount of land associated with his house and the uh, a lot of the guests uh stayed in tents on the yard. That 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 kinda makes sense, you know, they're they're probably gonna have a few drinks. They wouldn't be driving, so they can sleep in the tents.
Okay.
I I thought that was a good idea for.
It's on his private property, yeah.
Yeah, that would that would be covered under the exemption.
Okay.
You know, I mean, one-time private party event. It's gonna happen once. It's not gonna be recurring, recurring thing. Um.
I mean, I'm not gonna oppose this, Jim, but I uh the ground swell is gonna be, it's gonna be aimed at the planning board, but are we gonna get support from the police that are asking for it, the select board asking for it uh? Or does it seem like we're pulling something out of the air that addressing a problem that really is not affecting many people?
I will find out from the police and fire.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right. If 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 others aren't, well, I had mentioned this to them to the police and fire, they were, they were eager. So we'll see.
Gotta put him, you know, put him on the spot, say, are you gonna speak in favor of this bylaw at the town meeting? If not, you're the ones requesting it more or less.
Okay.
Because there's no ground swell of public opinion against these things, uh so.
Now to prevention.
Okeydoke. All right, and that was all I had on those two bylaws.
Great. Um, so I think um one of the things left over to do is I I still have to meet with the building department to look at the common permits for um the permitting guide. I'll share it with Tom's team, um Tom and DeeDee um to take a look and if they wanna add any additional items there, that probably makes sense to do that. Um, but after that, I don't think that there's any, we'll give it to the planning board one more time to take a look, but I don't think that there are any um other issues with it. It was just confirming um the permits for the building department for common permits. Um, so I think the last item, and you can stop me from talking about it, but it's the um payment in lieu of. Um, I don't know where the board has landed um based on your conversations with um the developer who wanted to do the um subdivision um or and how to move forward with with the language, revisiting it, looking at other examples again um and refining either the bylaw or um adopting new regulations.
We we're gonna address that one, that good bringing it up, Ken. And at the last meeting, we lifted with a couple of ideas. Um, one was, do we just wanna make it a donation pertinent to what it actually costs to make affordable house, affordable unit? Or do we want to pick a number, reasonable number, if you wanna call it reasonable, and make a donation and encourage the donation to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund um as opposed to trying to push people to build affordable units or convert into an affordable unit. And Bill and I were both of the opinion that we would want to see encourage the donations into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and use that to somehow maybe best word is encourage developers to either maintain affordable housing or put some affordable housing in place someplace in town when they're building something. So how do the other board, other board members feel?
Well, I I like the idea of what Sunderland did, and and they were under the gun. They didn't have their ten percent threshold that we have. So uh we're still in a fairly inviolable position to have choices. Uh, they addressed a questionnaire in town and the most common group of people that were concerned about affordability in housing was over sixty. So they made it sixty. So they made it 62 and over. That kind of takes away one of the arguments that traditionally is against affordable housing in that it's going to bring a lot of kids into the school. We're going to have to build a new school. We don't have room, blah, blah, blah. So that will take that away, but it does address the point. These people are the ones that need it the most. And they also, so they had a developer, it was a friendly 40B developer came in, built 33 apartments. I thought it was 43, but I think it's 33, but and they had all the compliance regulatory issues and they did all the interviewing of the prospective people that were going to live there. And if we ever do something like that, and there is a possibility with the Econolodges to do something like that, then I would like to almost eliminate that whole inclusionary zoning affordability thing because we're only making it more expensive for middle-income people. It's 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 like a double-edged sword. I may be off-base in thinking this way, but it's certainly going to make housing more expensive and we're pretty expensive as a community anyways to, so.
But how how, so how do you, how do you I I I don't have a problem with what you said, Joe. But how do you make somebody put in a over 62 housing project?
Okay, Econolodges comes before us. And they want to make an SRO, single-room occupancy, which is kind of people who are down on their luck and a lot of a lot of them, they have the drug issues.
I lived in a single-room occupancy once and I wasn't down on my luck.
Yeah, let 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 Joe talk.
Okay, and so that, we have that ability because we're we're over the 10% threshold. Sunderland had that ability to dictate what group of people they would like to see in town.
Under what part of the bylaw do we have the authority to have to convince? How do we get, my my question, Joe, is how do we get them to go to over 60?
But I have to go before a town meeting like Sunderland did and have to make the arrangements, so.
But in the meantime, Joe.
There is special exemption under a 40B to circumvent zoning.
Yes.
All right. So that's, that could be used.
You're going to quote, yeah, Mark.
I agree with Joe about the the over 60, you know, once you're on a, once you're on a fixed income, affordable housing becomes important and, you know, whether it's a one-room or single, I don't care, but I I think I might disagree with Joe about not wanting to encourage younger families. I I thought I read somewhere that our school system is actually that our attendance is actually dropping and if we don't get younger families in, you know, the state's going to tell us to consolidate with Hatfield or something again, you know, we might want to not just rule those out. I mean, I I was in a church where we were kind of aging out. Is Hadley aging out? What is our demographic? Do we not want kids?
Well, all all of Franklin
I'm not of that opinion.
It's 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 that that trend that you mentioned is not only in Hadley, all of Franklin County is in that trend. I mean, they're losing population in every school. They they have more kids in the Chicopee School District with one superintendent and Franklin County has 11 super superintendents. Will will they have to consolidate? So it's it's more than just Hadley. It's a regional issue. How do we address that from the school system? Don't know.
To 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 a quick answer to your question, Mark, Hadley has a decent amount of students in the school system only because of school choice. If it wasn't for school choice, we would have quite a few fewer students in school.
One of the best basketball players on the team is from Northampton.
So.
But getting back to the existing bylaw, that is what applies to any developer currently. And we we have to decide how it do we decide what the developer is going to do or does this developer decide what he's going to do? We can give him a dollar number. A dollar number, and I don't think there's any way that you can charge anyone less per unit than was charged at East Street Commons. And we get, we, you know, occasionally we get to the point, what are the question of what a unit is? Well, a unit is what the development has as a unit. Here at East Street Commons, it's one or two-bedroom houses, okay? Up there in North Hadley, it's probably three or four-bedroom houses. I don't know. So each each development has a different definition of unit.
A a unit is is simply a unit. It could be one bedroom, it could be three or four. That's absolutely correct. Regarding
Yeah.
We regarding the choice, a developer has three choices.
Right.
Build something onsite.
Yeah.
Do something off-site within the town of Hadley or donate to the fund.
And that is not, what he what he donates is not his choice. We have to tell him what he's going to do.
We will tell him what the donation will be.
Yeah.
But it is his choice which of the three developer tries to decide that they want to do.
Yeah. I mean, when we originally generically brought up the potential contribution for the the trust, the lawyer, which I guess is his job, went off the handle.
Yeah.
Then build a house.
That that that's, yeah, the it's it's this is this this donation thing is not unlike TDR. Under TDR, the developer has two choices. Either he can negotiate with a farmer to to save some land or put money into the TDR fund. Every single developer that has used TDR has used the donation to the fund because that was the easiest for them to go through.
Sure. I would encourage any developer that's going to be coming before us to understand this bylaw and what the responsibilities are on it and not try to wiggle out of it at the end, okay?
Yeah.
Because there's no wiggle room.
That that's why we want to, you know, that is why you want to try to set a value.
Yeah.
What is the opinion of the other board members as far as donation? Do we want to encourage the donation to the fund?
I think we
We simply want to use actual building cost. We actually use the actual building cost. The donation to the fund is going to be significant. If we can simply set a value for a unit, then it might be a lot more, you know. Again, do we want to encourage or or not?
Well, no, I think you want to encourage it because it simplifies things and you don't have to keep going around and around and around on the same area. You know, if if in fact the contribution per quote, unquote, unit here at East Street Commons was 24,000 per unit, then the the contribution up there would be $144,000 in dollars of four years ago.
Yeah. So I mean, for for speaking numbers, I was looking, this is what I was thinking, and obviously it's just a thought that if we want to encourage the donation to a the affordable fund, it would be $30,000 per unit. And let's say they needed, somebody somebody put in nine units. Okay, every six units would be $30,000 and the ninth unit would be half of that, so you'd put in 45,000. We should make it, we should make it a fractional amount. Somebody wants to put in, you know, a fraction of of the of the of this of this of the six.
I agree.
We may even want to change it. Somebody put the subdivision in one to five units, that they would make a nominal donation based on those. So that they don't try to put in a five unit where they could normally get a six just to avoid putting in 30,000.
But again, to Joe Zagradic's point, all this is doing is increasing the cost of housing.
I'm just, I do not disagree with it. I I agree with that.
It is if if they don't build an affordable unit. It's making those that aren't affordable less affordable.
Did you see that article? Somebody from Shelburne sent it down to the Gazette concerning affordable housing in that meeting we had a couple, two weeks ago. Did anybody see that?
I did.
You saw that?
Yes.
Just talking about exactly what we're talking about, how this bylaw just increases the cost of housing. And there should be an assessment on the other end, but.
I and and
Talking about Shelburne Falls, so.
There's actually some I believe there are some things before the legislature to put the equivalent of a CPA tax regarding affordable housing on deed transfers. Where it's going to, is it going to go anywhere? I don't know. Have you heard anything on that, Ken?
No, I think the information
It's a tricky one. It's a tricky one because you can't base it on the cost, what you sell it for, because you may have a mortgage of, you may sell it for a million and you got a mortgage of 400. So do you base it on 600 or a million? That being said, if you've got 40, $400,000 left on a mortgage for a million-dollar house, three months before you sell it, you refinance it, bring the mortgage up to 900,000 and your profit at that point in time is only a million. So we've got, you've got a lot of variables here. What you paid for it originally? The mortgage.
Pay on the equity.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think the mine only can endure what the seat can tolerate, so I don't think we're going to resolve anything here.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to resolve it, but nobody wants to answer my question.
What's the question?
At least Mike has given a thing. He's in favor of trying to encourage. What DeMark Dunn and Mr. Zagradnik feel.
My opinion is, I don't want to, you know, I've gone back and forth. I think I want to try to balance it as much as possible. I would love to have them build a unit. So I don't want to discourage that. So I I'd like it to feel balanced so that based on their case, they can either build a unit or pay into our fund, but I do, I do like the idea that they don't just pay into the fund when they when they hit a certain number. There has to be some graduated, you know, you can't just build under the number to to avoid helping the affordable housing.
Okay.
Well, it's the bylaw we have, but it's a bad bylaw for, as we've said, all it does is increase the cost of housing. Believe me, the developer isn't going to eat it. He's he's got a return on his capital that he wants and he's going to pass on to horse, buy in the house in Hadley.
Right.
And by the way, getting back to this potential fee on the sale of a house, it has to be, that has to be a statewide law. It can't be community by community by community. It has to be blanket.
Yeah, they're they're looking, they're looking to put it before the legislature, I believe. It's either going to be statewide or countywide. I'm not sure. But even that hasn't been anywhere. I mean, they're just, they're just talk about it. I don't think there's anything actually before them. But I'm not sure. I know Amherst was looking to for a, what do they call, they call that a what do you go before, we go before the legislature for something unique to your town? How they did it when they well, anyway, Amherst looked to possibly do something like that for their town. Um, but I don't know where that stands either.
My point is if each community could decide to put that fee on, sell the house, then that community would be taking on the onus of providing affordable housing to everybody.
I wish we could do something like something like the NFL's luxury tax. If you're going to build and sell units above a certain price, then you're going to, you're going to give a percentage to our fund. You know, because if if you're going to build it above the affordability, then just take a slice out of that and
I caught the Irving smiling because the New York Nets traded him to Dallas. No state income tax down there, okay?
Okay, Ken. Next meeting.
I'm I'm, it depends on when the board would like to meet. I'm available. I have my second, my first and third Tuesdays always free, so at the board's leisure, other than the second meeting in March. So next, the next meeting or the first meeting in March.
So you're available first meeting in March?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put you down for that one.
Okay.
And Mark, do not be afraid to join in on criticizing any member of the board. If you have a different opinion or you've seen things in other communities, please don't be hesitant to give your feedback because I think it's very valuable.
Thank you for that. I think, you know, I think this conversation is not unique. This is what's happening across the Commonwealth, especially when it comes to looking at inclusionary zoning bylaws, revisiting them. And just because, you know, there is this housing crisis that the government, the the state government has determined with regards to the availability of housing, you know, depending on the community, obviously there are differences. But
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I what I will continue to do as you started to talk and, you know, I think this is a fascinating development with regards to 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 maybe look at your inclusionary zoning bylaw and possibly amending that to address you know, those that wouldn't necessarily meet or need to utilize that because they were developing under your threshold. So, you know, I think Mark had alluded to that. You know, and I think that there are mechanisms and and towns have looked at that and amending from, you know, what currently was the threshold to allow for or to require rather the affordable unit.
And you know, I wish the state would look at how state policy caused the demand for housing to exceed what might naturally occur if so many transfer payments weren't weren't taking place. You want to live in Massachusetts because, you know, you can live, you can live here without signing a paycheck.
Healthcare, you know, it's analogous to healthcare. I I was on a legislative committee when I was in practice. 18% when I was aboard of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts was on mass health Medicaid. Now it's 38% in 10 years since I've been retired, and that's how much it's gone up. I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to share one more related thought and that's I feel bad some days when I think about the fact that I got up at town meeting and spoke against Barry Roberts' variance amendment to build outside the the over 50 overlay district. Because I liked his project, but I heard a lot of the neighbors, I wanted to speak on their behalf. They were like, you know, it was not going to be in their best interest. So I wonder, have we looked at, when's the last time we looked at, can we expand the over 50, over 55 overlay district? Are there other areas that we could make more opportunities? Because I thought I heard, I thought I heard someone say there isn't anywhere else to do it.
Maybe it should be the whole town.
Two years ago, two years ago, Mark, there was a rezoning issue for something like that and it failed. Then, you know, it it's not in my backyard, one of the, you know, the
That's what he was talking about.
Yeah, yeah, that's the way it is and
The Deion, the Deion property.
Yeah.
Well, the Deion property was going to be very, that was really packed and it was going to really hit Middle Street with a lot of traffic with just one outlet.
Well, that's not true. I live here and you can you can sit on your front porch, Mark, and there's no cars. There's nobody leaves or comes. That that was a false argument and I can attest to that because I live at East Street Commons. There's no traffic here. Maybe when they're built.
I wonder if after the state widens and puts more sidewalks I wonder if after the statewide and puts more sidewalks. If there would be, you know, not elderly housing, but you know, if projects along Route Nine might.
I, I've heard that there's a potential.
I could just finish my point, Mike.
Okay, sorry.
You have a lot to say. There might be pockets where we could do something that might now be more accessible because right now. You wouldn't want to be putting over fifty on Route Nine because there's no sidewalks. They can't get anywhere safely if they don't have a car. So.
Uses the sidewalks.
Well, now that we have some experience, for lack of a better term, with a senior housing project. To Mike's point, we know how much traffic really goes down that street. So if somebody starts saying, well, there's going to be too much traffic to the neighborhood.
Hmm.
No, do a traffic count on the existing senior housing and you'll see and with thirty-five homes, you'll see that there's. You know, a couple of cars an hour. That's, that's nothing.
But Mark, when, before Barry Roberts started, uh, he had a focus group, a bunch of old geezers like myself. Got together, what do you want to pay? Well, we want to pay two twenty-five, two fifty. And he, he was ready for that one and he puts this, a picture of a house up there. Oh, we want a two-car garage, not a one-car garage. Okay, so we'll put a two-car garage in. The bedrooms are kind of small. We would like, uh, you know, two bigger bedrooms. Okay, we'll put a bedroom in. Two bedrooms in. Is there a cellar? No, we'll put a cellar in. Okay, we'll put a cellar in. Granite countertops and all of a sudden you're up to four hundred thousand. So what people like and what. They can afford, who knows, uh, so. Very interesting.
I've heard there's some talk about a potential site off of Route Nine, I won't mention it, but there is. Talk about it, but it would have to, would have to change the zoning.
Yeah.
Uh, alright, um.
Okay. Hey, thank you, Ken.
Sorry to talk over you, Mark.
Okay, Mike.
Well, I wish we were, um, somebody asked us when we're going to go to live meetings again. Never?
Um, the Zoom meetings. That the governor approved, the extension for Zoom meetings expires March thirty-first.
Okay.
I was on a meeting today with Mass Municipal Association and they don't know what the legislature is going to do. But there was. A tremendous amount of people on this meeting today from across the state of Massachusetts. And the vast majority of them loved Zoom meetings. They do not want to get rid of Zoom.
No, if, if, if we end up over at the old library, we, we should definitely have the technology to, to do hybrid because I. When I do the uh, diversity committee, we do hybrids. We have. You know, we can have a number of people zooming in and with that, that owl camera, Mike, it actually really. Um, handles it pretty well.
Yeah.
And can we have a big screen, Mark, that flashes up all the blueprints and?
Well, the, 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 the big screen up front is, the, 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 the new library has a big, has a, has, selectmen have hybrid meetings. And they are. Sometimes if you don't have TV five. Um. I would say monitoring and addressing it. It's, 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 it's a tough, tough deal to manage with somebody from the planning board, from, 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 from somebody on a board.
Well, yeah, people have to start using their expense accounts again. They come to Hadley, they stayed at a hotel, they spend a little money at a restaurant. That's good for everybody.
So.
Well, that was good for business that Tom was able to be with us and then also be on site for his other meeting. So that was a good example for, for Zoom.
Yeah, I like Zoom meetings.
And you don't have to see my mask.
But now that we've had them, I think they're the cats. I, I'd be honest. I do not want to get rid of Zoom. Hybrid meetings, well, maybe.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Is there any progress with the old library?
Pardon?
Is there any progress? Yeah, with us being, getting space over there?
I have heard nothing about the old library for anybody.
Okay.
I saw a, a building committee meeting briefly and. Somebody dropped the ball, you know? If you're going to have somebody to, to encourage it.
Okay. You got your money's worth tonight, Jim.
Um, let's see, we do have two bills to pay. We have a Gazette bill for legal advertising for the Verizon legal ad for four hundred seventeen dollars and ten cents.
I would make a motion to pay it.
I'll second.
Okay. Who seconded? Mark, Mike seconded.
I think Joe seconded, Mark made the motion.
Joe, okay. Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor of paying the bill, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero with Mr. Dwyer absent. And we have a bill for four hundred five dollars and fifty-two cents. For legal advertising for the Emily, I think it's Aike, for her home occupation. That'll be at, I believe, one of our meetings, on our next meeting.
I would make a motion to pay that as well.
Second.
Let Joe second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero one again. And that's all I have. You have anything, Mr. Quinman? No? Does your number one assistant?
Just wanted to ask Ken if he wants to just email. We'll set up a time to get together.
Great.
Oh.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I have nothing else. Anybody have anything else?
Good night.
Motion, you have something, Mike?
No, good night.
Be careful if your driver Joe is a citizen outside.
Oh, not tonight. Move with your turn.
Have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.